Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome, I'd like to call tonight's Temecula City Council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We're gonna have Buck Longmore come up for the invocation, welcome Buck, and then I will lead in the flag salute after, join us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Lord, we ask that you would give wisdom and discernment to the city council members as they decide upon the many issues that affect this great city. We ask that you would continue to guide, lead, and direct their actions, and thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon this city and its people. Lord, I also lift up the men and women who continue to serve and sacrifice for our country, cities, and towns across this great nation, and pray that you continue to strengthen and encourage their hearts. It's in Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
All right, please join me in saluting our flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam City Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before I take the roll call, I will go ahead and publicly state that this morning, a special city council meeting was held, and the city council did render a decision, that decision setting for, will be set forth in a resolution and adopted on the consent calendar at the April 25 regular meeting. With that, I'll go ahead and call the roll call, Councilmember Alexander.
I'm here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Kalfis.
Here.
Mayor Schwenk.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
All right, we'll go ahead and move into our presentations, the first presentation is a presentation of proclamation for DMV Donate Life Month. I'd like to, I'll walk down onto the podium, but we'd have Erica Heranek, is she here tonight? There she is, all right, I'm gonna head down, Erica. I've got the lapel going. So I'm gonna go ahead and, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation to you, and then we'll ask you to have a little presentation for us as well. Okay, it says, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting, and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, and whereas a single individual's donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and whereas donation of tissue can save and heal lives of more than 75 others, and whereas deceased organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever, and whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions, and whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency, and whereas California residents can sign up to, sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donvidaCalifornia.org, and whereas California residents interested in saving life through kidney donation may visit livingdonationCalifornia.org. Now therefore, I, Mayor Zach Schwenk, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 to be DMV Donate Life Month, and we encourage all Californians to check yes online when applying or renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, thank you. Or three, all right, thank you, and we'd love to hear more from you.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't know if the slide goes up. Okay, yeah, so my name is Erica Heranek, I've been a One Legacy Ambassador for five years, and on behalf of One Legacy, which is the Donate Life for seven counties in Southern California, we're actually the liaison between the transplant centers and the hospitals, along with our partnership with the DMV, we want to express and extend our gratitude and appreciation for the mayor and the city of Temecula for reissuing the DMV Donate Life Month proclamation every year to kick off April as Donate Life Month. Why is Donate Life Month so important? Well, as you heard in the proclamation, because it saves and heals many lives, minions, Temecula has been greatly impacted in the surrounding community, and my life has been impacted as well. I wouldn't be here without a transplant. My journey actually began around Easter of 2016, had an illness triggered life-threatening health consequences, where it went heart attack, to arrhythmia, to going into cardiac arrest nine times, to open-heart surgeries, not responding, stroking, priest brought in for my last rites, and I had a 10% chance of survival unless I had that transplant. But thanks to my donor, Dylan Stump, who's right here, there's a picture of him in the lower right-hand corner, and I always carry him here, he saved my life, he was my match. He was a Cal Baptist University student, 19-years-old, on his way home for Easter 2017, when he just got in a little fender bender while waiting for a tow truck, traffic backs up, people get impatient, so a car, truck decided to go down the emergency lane and hit his car at 65 miles an hour. He saved my life, five lives total, 213 tissue samples, so when we talk about tissue samples, we're talking about ACLs, knee replacement, dental implants, skin grafts for mastectomies, burn victims, just to give you an example what tissue samples are, and that's how many lives he impacted, and I'm truly grateful because now I get to celebrate my sixth heart transplant anniversary this 19th. Now, Donate Life not only increases the awareness for the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation, but it takes an opportunity to honor the donor families, so in the lower right-hand corner there, I'm standing there to, next to Dylan's mom, Dana, who's also One Legacy Ambassador, and yes, she has hurt his heart and my, beating my chest, we team together, we participate in the Donate Life Run Walk, April 29, 12,000 people go there to honor all the donor families that have, became heroes. This is at Azusa Pacific University in Azusa, and it's truly amazing, you'll see a couple posters of Dylan on there, there's a Circle of Life Garden where all those being honored are posted, and then there's a wall next to the Circle Life Garden with all the Donate Life proclamations from all the Southern California cities, so showing support. Another way that we support Donate Life, DMV does the, participates in the Blue Green Day, which is actually Friday, April 14, and they take their picture, and our, I partner with the Temecula DMV, and they won statewide out of 84 DMVs, so they're truly amazing, and many of them have direct connection to organ, eye, and tissue donation. Looking at the recent statistics, as mentioned, there was 42,800 transplants actually done in 2022, the year before 41,000, it makes 13 or 14 years in a row of records, say, life-saving surgeries, which is amazing, the, let's put it in perspective, Southern California alone, Southern California, 4,866 transplants, whereas the year before it was 4693. Current transplant waiting list though is 106,000, this time last year it was also 106,000, so if you notice, there's, you heard that 17 to 16, 17 to 19 people pass away each day, and just as many get on the list, because actually in December the list was 104. Let's, and again, Southern California waitlist is 24,000 now, it went up since the proclamation, 21,000 of them are kidneys, and many wait 11 years before they can get that life-saving organ, many not making it because it takes like 11 years, next largest need is liver, and then lungs, and so forth, and goes down the line. So, if you are a registered donor and you have the pink dot, I really appreciate that because you never know that you might be the match to someone and leave a legacy, now if you aren't, you can, heard, you can consider registering it, because you never know, not everyone's a match, and you just might be the one, you might leave a legacy. Dana calls me a silver lining to a tragedy because I'm here, and, and she knows others are benefiting from Dylan, and also, I have this, I was a teacher for 20 years in the Lake Elson Unified School District, primarily at Terracotta Middle School, and I had students all the way from 1999 come and visit me and get me through because it was a very, very rough road, and they brought me this, it's a pig with wings, I taught language arts, when pigs fly. So it touched me that organ donation helps makes the impossible possible, and I like to think with the support of Temecula, you're making that awareness out there in the community, it's becoming more commonplace that you're helping pigs to fly, and I thank you very much.
Okay, so we have another presentation, this is a proclamation for Innovation Month, Mary Cervantes, and would you like to have the entire team come up, or if everyone would like to come up? All right, fair enough, okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, whereas Temecula appreciates its partnership with the Riverside County Economic Development Agency, the SBDC, and the EDC, to help make Temecula a place for innovation and entrepreneurship, and whereas the city of Temecula works for its business community by progressively providing the highest quality of life in an environment where businesses can thrive, and whereas Temecula and Riverside County have become a hub of innovation, technology, and entrepreneurial activities that need to be highlighted throughout California, and whereas the city of Temecula created the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange to incubate innovation and support entrepreneurs, and whereas the city of Temecula recognizes the value of creating an entrepreneurial ecosystem that rewards the innovation of technology and ideas. Now therefore, I, Mayor Zach Schwenk, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 to be Innovation Month, and the city of Temecula to continue encouraging the growth and expansion of innovation, technology, entrepreneurship in our community and in the region.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, thank you. All right, we'd certainly love to hear more from you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council, thank you, and happy Innovation Month. I'm Mary Cervantes, TV2 Manager. Innovation Month is a month-long celebration of creativity, progress, and forward-thinking, and an opportunity to recognize and honor the entrepreneurs and innovators who are working tirelessly to create new products, services, and solutions. It is a time to reflect on the importance of innovation and to inspire a new generation of entrepreneurs. As we celebrate this month, I would like to take a moment to recognize the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, also known as the TV2, which is a regional resource hub and startup incubator instrumental in promoting innovation and entrepreneurship across the region, and is located right here in the valley. At TV2, we provide a range of no-cost programs and services designed to help entrepreneurs start and grow successful businesses. These include workshops, mentoring, networking opportunities, and access to technology and resources. I want to encourage the public to tap into our, our activities, excuse me, throughout April Innovation Month, and of course, all year round, by visiting our website at tv2.org. In the spirit of innovation, joining me tonight to accept this proclamation is Mr. Mark McConaughey. Mark is the founder and CEO of Iatric Air, Inc., a health tech startup that is a part of the Business Incubator Program at the TV2. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mark to share a little bit more about his innovative product.
Thank you, Mary. Mayor, City Council Members, and citizens of Temecula, we want to thank you very much for what a great and incredible launchpad for startups here in this city, from the facilities, to the resources, to the webinars, and to a great staff, it's such a boost to a startup. Startups are not easy, to have this here in Temecula is fantastic. My name is Mark McConaughey, no relationship to the actor, but all right, all right, all right. My kids looked at me and my wife and said, why are you moving us to Temecula? Well, now we can get rid of them, I think it has something to do with the wine country. But anyway, Temecula is my home, and it's the home of my startup, Iatric Air, and Iatric Air's core technology is a combination of hardware and software, along with machine learning and AI that can protect, detect, and protect against indoor airborne pathogens, okay, sounds quite fancy, so let's take a look. Okay, let's see here, oops, up on the screen is a picture of what we do, it's a combination of hardware and software, but the key is, to a business, our costs have gone up tremendously during this period, and what our solution will do is help businesses reduce its cost, both the electricity costs and also employee absenteeism, but basically get us back to pre-pandemic way of life. I think this operates much like on a Boeing jet, we designed this to affect with the physics and the photonics to provide safe and healthy air very, very quickly in enclosed spaces. This is my fourth startup, not all of them went well, I learned the most from the one that didn't do as well. It's my passion though, I really enjoy working with, building a team, and, and dealing with technology and bringing it to the market, and Greg is here with me, he's a, I kidnapped him from Clorox, so it's all about the team, and my wife says that, you know, that I have a problem, I have an addiction, not a, not a passion. But anyway, we invite you all over to TV2 to learn more about what we do and see our prototype, and we also have a purchase order from a customer now, and we're speeding to the market this fall, so this is real, and we want to thank you very much, and all of the startups, I think there's 10 now, at TV2, really want to send their regards today, and thank you very much for this launchpad, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. It's certainly nice hearing those first-person accounts of what we're doing over there, so thank you. All right, we will move to our annual joint meeting between the City Council and the Race, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Commission. The commission chair, like to come to the podium, welcome.
Good evening. Mary Schwenk, City Council Members, City Staff, we are happy to be here this evening, I'll go ahead and have my commissioners stand up, and join me here at the podium. Our commissioners consist of Stasia Deutsch, Adam Eventoff, Eric Faulkner, Lyman Lecters, who cannot be here tonight, Crystal Pastorian, myself, Jackie Steed, and Denise Wilson. The Race, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Ready Commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhanced community relations. Our monthly meetings are the second Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council Members, and this amazing staff we have here that always keeps the city rolling. I want to start with new and former commissioners, we welcome Adam Eventoff, was sworn in, Imelda Huerta departs, and then we brought in Lyman Lecters to fill that position as well, and those are great additions, and we hate to see Imelda leave, but we know she had to move on to bigger and better things. As far as our Chair and Vice Chair, over the last year Denise Wilson did an amazing job leading us as the Chair, and then Vice Chair Jackie Steed, who was promoted this, this year, did an amazing job leading the Ready Commission through the year. Next was the city former Youth and Government Program, as you see there, the commission provided general recommendations to expand the Youth and Government to include additional students beyond high school, juniors, and seniors, to include non-public schools and build capacity by rotating staff, commissions, and city, and off-site or virtual programming, we wanted to look beyond what we were doing to see if there was opportunities to expand, and those are our recommendations back to, in regards to the Youth and Government Program. As we roll into the Multicultural Day, the commission provided general recommendations to create an annual multicultural day celebration, which included, one, a single-day festival to, to be held annually on the weekend coinciding with World Cultural Diversity Day, May 21st. Number two, the community would be proactively encouraged to attend and/or actively participate as attendees, vendors, and other participants, and then number three, activities would include food, drink, entertainment, and education tied to cuisine, history, and awareness of different cultures, and last but not least, number four, incorporating economic tourism and resource tie-in for local businesses, service providers, and nonprofits where possible. So as you know, that first multicultural day was amazing, it was a hit, as we went out and talked to the citizens across the, across our city, they loved it, so looking forward to the one we're gonna put on this year, next slide. I wrote it right into the master, Quality of Life Master Plan, so the commission reaffirmed the text of the draft equity core value, and worked with planner Matt Peters, is Matt here tonight, because he didn't, there he is, right there, it was great working with him, Matt did a great job in herding the cattle, and making sure everybody had an inclusive piece of this document, and it was well thought out, well prepared. We considered goals, key indicators, and data by which to measure performance on the equity core value, and staff, and the, and the consultant memorized, memorialized the feedback, and returned to the Ready Commission March to finalize the recommendations. The draft equity core value then went to Blue Ribbon Committee and City Council for final approval, so great job, I just want to put a plug out for Matt and the office, they did an amazing job bringing us together, next slide, and I'll turn it over.
As the newest member of the Ready Commission, I want to thank you all for this opportunity to serve, it has been an amazing few months, and I look forward to continuing to serve my community and my city. In March 2022, Temecula Valley Rose Society, representatives of the organization provided an overview of the Temecula Rose Society and their work in the communities, discussed the new peace garden and peace poles, and invited the public to the dedication which fell on International Peace Day. In a budget engagement session, Financial Director Jennifer Hennessy provided an overview of the annual budget process, capital improvement projects, and the council's budget priorities to best serve the community. The commission agreed with the priorities and made additional recommendations regarding the funding for the annual Culture Fest, resources and facilities on the west side of the freeway and Pujol Streets, businesses struggling post-pandemic, commission's support and trainings, and accessible parks and facilities for the special needs population, next slide. For the Riverside Transit Agency, the RTA, in April 2022, Executive Director Kristen Warskinski and Planning Director Jennifer Nigun provided an overview of RTA's transit programs and services for Temecula residents, including seniors and youth. Topics of discussion included routes and rates, ridership numbers, Title VI, minority, and low-income population in service areas, passenger surveys, equity analysis, Budget Watch app, budget stop selection process, transit and affordable housing, bus efficiency voucher programs, intervention for non-payment of fare, ride, guide, and webpage accessibility, visually impaired information, dial-a-ride, ride promotions, labor challenges, recruitment and retention of bus drivers, safety, and the Go Pass You Pass program.
You made it.
It's on you now.
Good evening.
A lot of bus stuff.
So, in May, Kanika Willingham, Minority Veterans Program Coordinator, provided an overview of the Minority Veterans Program. Given the number of active-duty and retired military in this, in this area, this was incredibly important. Topics of discussion included healthcare for minority veterans, ethnic veteran populations and historical discrimination, system transference and available, availability of programs to address trauma and whole health for women veterans. Culture Fest, which commission, the commissioner already referred to, was held in May through the Community Services Department. Community Services Superintendent Dominik provided an overview of the Culture Fest event, which was held Saturday, May 21, coinciding with World Cultural Diversity Day. Topics of discussion included vendor participation, education, entertainment, and the boards and commissions booth. If you guys had a chance to attend that, it was phenomenal, it was one of the most outstanding events in Western Riverside County that year. In summer, in June, although we were on summer break, we did have the, we did participate in the Juneteenth event, and had a proclamation presentation, and Vice Chair Faulkner kicked off the event with a song with "Life Every," uh, live, lift, the, lift every voice and sing, and it, you know, not only tall, good-looking, but you should have heard the pipes on this guy, unbelievable. Put you on the spot, no? Oh, okay, all right. In July, Allison Willettis, Executive Director of Community Mission of Hope and Rancho Domocetus, provided an overview of the programs offered through CMOH, and asked the commission to spread awareness to the underserved segments of the community that may benefit from those programs. And then, the commission received an overview of the general municipal election. The November 2022 election was the first local general municipal election that the commission experienced as an appointed body of the city council since the commission's inception in January 2021. Commissioner Pastorian?
Thank you, appreciate that, it's always a pleasure to be here and have a year in review with all of you. In August of 2022, we had a introduction and presentation given to us by Lieutenant Craig Roberts of the Riverside County Sheriff's Office, provided an overview of the Special Needs Reunification Program. The program is designed to reunify displaced individuals, including those diagnosed with autism, dementia, Alzheimer's disease, Down syndrome, et cetera, with their families in a timely manner. A special registry with RSO notes important information about potentially displaced individuals, including specific traits and characteristics, is provided. RSO has the access to then re-get that information and provide it when they make their first contact with the displaced person, increasing the chances of a successful interaction and reunification. It is because of this particular presentation that TVUSD's Community Advisory Committee was also able to have Lieutenant Decker come and present directly to their special needs In October, well, so let's go back, September, we had a fall break, which was nice, so in October of 2022, Michelle's Place, Kim Garrish, Executive Director of Michelle's Place, provided an overview of the Full Service Cancer Resource Center providing free resources to family experiencing cancer. The resources included a variety of support groups, wigs, prostheses, art programs, wellness classes, one-on-one support, and more. From a ready perspective, in addition to providing free services and programs to clients of all socioeconomic backgrounds, Michelle's Place has Spanish-speaking support groups, multi-shade prostheses for clients, and demonstrates the commitment to DEI values as a condition of its grant funding. Quality of Life Master Plan, the QLMP, once again, again, Matt Peters over here, I think my fellow Commissioner Faulkner mentioned earlier, he came in and provided alongside Doug Swenson, a presentation of the completed draft of the QLMP. The Ready Commission was actively engaged in the QLMP process at the council's direction, especially with respect to the equity core value. The presentation highlighted the process, public input, and the summary of the goals and indicators. Commissioners provided a final input of the draft of the QLMP and commended staff on the excellent community engagement and outreach efforts.
Good evening, City Council Members, staff, and our fellow guests and commissioners. In November, the Boys and Girls Club of Southwest County, Executive Director Carly Bennett provided us with an overview of the club's efforts to provide academic support for sports, arts, STEM programs, career readiness, leadership programs, and before and after-school care programs, also day camps. The club also provided DEI staff training, considers DEI in services and programs, and has a DEI adopted policy to ensure that they are successfully reaching children types, all different types of youth, and we had a lot of interaction with the presenter that evening, because we wanted to share with them what our missions and our goal is for the Ready Commission, and hope that they would take some of that back and implement that, ensure their DEI, so we had a good conversation that evening. And then we had the ESRI, which is our Environmental Systems Research Institute, Jacqueline Scott, who is the Senior Account Manager of ESRI, and also the city's consultant for Geographic Information Systems, GIS, provided an overview of the available data that we have here, identifying the demographic information for our community, the ability to layer data related to tree density, open space, education, public transportation, parking availability, storm and drain responses, and responses based on residential locations, veteran status, natural disaster impact, for insurance access and costs, crime and company policing, health conditions, and impoverished neighborhood access to interconnected services. neighborhood access to interconnected services. So we had a lot going on, on that meeting. So we needed a break for the month of December. Um, you will always find our ready commission out and about around town. Probably Eric Faulkner is at everything. Um, so some of the events that we attend are the student mural unveiling and also the state of the city. We do the ribbon cutting ceremony. Puyska Mountain, did I get it right? Uh huh. Okay. So we worked on that one. Cultural Festival, which we were truly excited about because that was something that came out of our Zoom meetings at the very beginning of our ready commission. And then the Juneteenth celebration, the veteran celebration, holiday celebrations, and more. And also, our ready commission is involved with cross-representation on a lot of different DEI purposes. And some of those are the Chamber of Commerce that we're involved with, as well as the local, state, and national Association of Realtors. And that completes my report.
All right.
Alrighty, so our 2023 goals for our commission, to continue to build relationships with community, residents, businesses, nonprofits, and schools, to fully implement the proclamation celebration sent to the ready commission by the council. And we do have the Arab American Heritage Proclamation this Thursday. We will continue to review and make recommendations to the city council in an advisory capacity on items forwarded to the ready commission. We will continue to work on Culture Fest, Juneteenth, and other events as needed. Next slide. Alrighty, we'll end with a quote, "The essence of life is to serve others and do good." That was by Aristotle. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. And does anybody have any questions?
Right. Any questions of commissioners? No, no questions. I'll just make a brief comment. I, I just want to again thank, uh, you all for the time and energy that you put into this commission. Um, it hasn't been an easy road, uh, I, I would say. Unfortunately, sometimes when we start new things, uh, there are some folks having aversion to that. And, um, but you've handled it well. Um, you've sort of proved that, uh, what you are doing is good in the community. And, uh, and I'm really proud of the work that you're doing and, and, uh, continue to, uh, make our city more inclusive and a safer place for everyone.
And I want to echo the, uh, the mayor's comments. He asked if he had any questions, not necessarily comments, but, um, it hasn't been an easy road for you. And I hope that you guys, uh, continue to move forward as you did in 2022 and accomplishing your goals. And if there's anything that we could do, um, to assist you with that, um, as always, you guys will reach out, but, um, I hope you guys are doing okay, considering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do a quick photograph. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to our board and commission reports this evening. We have Community Services Commission, uh, Chair Kathy Sizemore, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Schwenk, uh, City Council members and executive staff and Temecula residents. My name is Kathy Sizemore, and I am the chairperson for the Community Services Commission. We are a commission of five. We have commissioners Castro, Hawks, Kingsburg, Adi, and myself. The purpose of our commission is to make recommendations on topics related to the parks and recreation element of the general plan and to provide, uh, parks and rec services and programs for the community. Our last meeting was here last night in council chambers. Next slide, please. Uh, during our meeting, we approved our action minutes for our March 13th, 2023 meeting. We also received an update on the urban forest management plan from Stacy Fox in Public Works. And we received a presentation on the workforce development education programs, which is quite impressive. That was given to us by Charles Walker. And we did adjourn our meeting last night in gratitude and in memory of Daryl Farinbakanal, he's done for contributing and preserving the culture and history of our community. And our next meeting will be May 8th, 2023, here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. And we'll move on to our public safety report. Welcome, uh, Chief Chris Durham.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and residents of Temecula, good evening. Uh, as you can see, year-to-date for 2023, uh, your Temecula deputies have responded to 19,135 calls for service. So for the month of March, that's 6,870, which is an average call volume of 221 calls a day. Um, not much of an increase over 2022. And that ends my report. If there's any questions, I'll take them now.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Durham? All right. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you. Okay. We'll move on to the public, uh, comment portion of our agenda for non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments this evening?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have seven public comments. They are all on non-agendized items. The rules are reflected on the agenda. Each speaker has three minutes. The first speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Janice and Jim Richardson.
Welcome.
Okay. This was, um, I, I pulled this off the Institute for Local Government, and this is for Stu. Um, a few weeks, weeks back, we, uh, the council passed, passed a resolution against Carl DeMio's tax, uh, reduction or tax, tax, uh, resolution or tax measure. And what that was all about was that, that two-thirds, uh, two-thirds of the people needed to, uh, in order to pass a tax resolution. I wanted to show you that it's already two-thirds in most cases in California. If you look at the city and county, go across the top line right here, you'll see the city and county, that's two-thirds already, except for fees and rents over on the end over here. On, on the special districts, it's still two-thirds. And, uh, let me get my glasses on, two-thirds, uh, voter approval on almost all of those. And it used to be K through 14 or K through 12, excuse me, 14. Schools used to be, uh, two-thirds as well. And that's this point right here. And with resolution, Proposition 39 changed that from two-thirds to 55%. So you still need a super majority of 55% in order to pass, uh, that. In the case of the state, legislatures cannot pass a, uh, a, a tax unless it's two-thirds of each house of the legislature. Both houses of the legislature need to pass that. The, the way around that is that approvals of a majority of the statewide voters can be done. And that was changed by also another proposition done by, um, more recently in, in the last 25 years. So, um, fees are different, uh, in this case than, than are, um, what they call taxes and bonds. So for instance, in Marietta, we passed $120 million school bond many years ago, maybe 20, and they passed by 57%. If it was the 66 that was required before, they would not have passed that bill. Marietta Mesa High School would not, would have been built the way it was. It would have been downsized to something different. What I wanted to just to point out is that we live in a republic, not a democracy. And the reason why it's two-thirds is because if I took, I had 51, uh, 51 people on this side of the room, and I had 50 people on this side of the room, if 51 of the people, 51 of the people on that side of the room wanted to say, hey, um, I want to take the money of these 50 people over here, and I'm going to spend the money, um, down the street at, at the local pub, um, uh, that, they, they could do that with this, with this, uh, without this measure. So thank you very much.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Janice and Jim Richardson, to be followed by Steve Kim.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Schwenk, uh, City Council and staff. Uh, I'm James Richardson, JR, as you probably know me. I'm here tonight with my wife, Janice Richardson, uh, we, as the founders of the Temecula Valley Dachshund Club, to tell you about our next event coming up, which is April 30th at Mount Palomar Winery, the Wine Country Wiener Fest. So you remember, we had an event in November at Vale Headquarters. And at that event, we had about 140 dachshunds racing in our races for the crown. It was a fun event. I think we saw some, some of our city council there. So this one is going to be even bigger here because it's in the spring. We're done with the rain. Uh, it's going to be amazing. Uh, signups are, are well ahead of schedule. Um, we have family-friendly games, local vendors and services, uh, huge raffle prizes. People are donating so much. I don't know how we're going to get it all there, but we will. Um, and, uh, we have a 50/50 drawing, um, and just lots of vendors. You want to?
Good evening. Um, we also are, are raising money for four local dog rescues, and there will be dogs there for, uh, up for adoption, along with, uh, Mount Palomar is going to put on a very nice barbecue. They're going to do burgers, hot dogs, and brats for us. They're also going to have their wine tastings in full bar. Um, we also have, um, games for adults and kids. We're going to do face painting, uh, for the kids. And we have custom event wine glasses with the logo on the wine glasses in gold. We also have other custom items that we're going to be up for sale also. And it's just a, a good day to bring out your family and friends and just enjoy the outdoors and all that the event has to offer.
And so, uh, again, this is a, a family-friendly event. We're trying to do something positive in the community while raising, uh, some money for local Southern California Dachshund rescue groups. Uh, so we're the Wiener Dog people, and we hope to see you out at Mount Palomar Winery on April 30th, uh, start at 11:00 AM, and it should be a really fun day. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Steve Kim, to be followed by Ryan Greenlee.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? It was very echoing from the back, so I like to switch to the other way. Uh, dear city man, uh, city mayor and council members, uh, I'm Steve Kim, uh, the developer of the Temecula Resort and Spa Projects. I think we are fully aware of the project details since I sent you the project overview about a week ago. The reason, the reason I came down here today is that I was notified the city, city staff yesterday that the steering, steering committee meeting scheduled at 4:00 PM today has been canceled and postponed to May 9th. In fact, we had the two steering committee meetings that replaced Old Town Review Board meeting last year. Through the process, we made an improvement of the facade design, and we think we met all the old town review, old town specific design guidelines. And the city staff felt comfortable to present it to the today's steering committee meeting. The problem I'm facing now is that the, your plan commission meeting date can be set, can be scheduled only after the steering committee meeting, and applying the construction permit is allowed after the planning commission, uh, meeting, after the planning commission meeting date is set. Uh, we are ready to submit the plans and start the construction right after the public hearing. But this postponement of the steering committee meeting will push back one month for the planned construction. For the developers, time is directly related to the success of the project. And I believe that you are fully aware of the fact that it's very important all contractors involved in the development project. In fact, we did the detailed planning with the local engineers and contractors and worked out the resource planning for execution and excavation and concrete works already. It's okay to have a scheduled meeting, committee meeting on May 9th, but if you allow for setting up the planning commission meeting day now, it won't delay the projects. As you know, the EIR for the 2.2 acre, the project site was already completed by the city long time ago. And the site was joined for high-rise hotel, as long as it provides conference space accommodating, accommodating more than 1,000 people and offer 24-hour food service.
Mr. Kim, your time is up.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
The city was offered the tax benefit.
Mr. Kim, you have three minutes, and your three minutes is over.
You already done it?
Yes, sir. Three minutes. It goes fast when you're up there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought it was one page. Can you allow me one more minute? I can't do it.
We cannot. It has to be fair to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
The next speaker is Ryan Greenlee, to be followed by James Hill.
Ryan had to leave early. He had to get to a job, project. And so I'm James Hill.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi, uh, City Council, this is first for me. Um, my name's James Hill. I own Southwest Concrete Structures. And, um, I came down from Vancouver, Canada in 88, and a company sent me to Temecula to do work on the Target Center and so forth. I said, who the heck would come down here? And sure enough, I moved here in 92. So I've been here for 30 years. All my work has been in LA. I try to do everything I can in this town. I did, um, two of the garages here in Old Town. I was on the Truax parking, automated garage, and as well as the, um, other Hilton Curio that's kind of, it's been shelved for a bit, but I hope they come back. But, um, um, I've done a lot of work in this town. This project, I'm here with Mr. Kim. He is, um, put a pretty nice project together, which is a nice vision for the town. I think the location's amazing. Um, uh, it's going to kind of set the standard for Temecula, um, with the Altura Project eventually hoping to come through. That whole, that whole drive going up into the town, into the hills will, uh, be quite nice. Um, there are a couple of projects, like I just mentioned, that have been shelved, and Mr. Kim has the funds and the money and the ability to get this project done. I'd like to help him do it. So I'm here on his behalf. So I encourage you to help expedite get this project built, if you could. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ross Jackson, to be followed by the last speaker, Mick Sobzak.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. I would like to reiterate some of the comments that Mr. Kim was promoting is that this project has been going on for a little over a year and a half. And while we understand that the specific plan and which I was a part of prior to being a consultant to Mr. Kim, I was the, uh, director of the planning commission, uh, excuse me, the Old Town Local Review Board. So I have a great deal of experience with the Old Town Local Review Board, master plans, the specific plan in general. So what you can see is that originally when Mr. Kim presented this project to me, it was out of compliance. It looked like a, uh, shall we say, in some cases, it looked like a, a prison yard building. It was just flat and, uh, uninviting. Since we took over the project, we just, we established a more of a neoclassical design, which is part of the specific plan details. In your package that was submitted to you last week or so from Mr. Kim, you will see all the details, inclusive to what we're, what I'm showing up here as well. This building is in the hotel zone, which is part of the specific plan, and is, uh, actually permitted to do so. That means it's a neat story, 100-foot height limitations. And it does talk about the fact that is that, uh, it is a five-star or greater hotel for the city of Temecula. It's located on the south end of town. And doing so, this is going to actually bring more of a presence when people are heading north on the 15 to the location of Old Town Temecula. This is going to be quite the presence on the south end of Temecula. It's also going to generate over $10 million in, uh, Temecula, uh, room tax. And we feel that, uh, the opportunity, we understand the fact that you had a meeting, that we could have, have the council, our meeting today. But we implore you to look at another date because this is just a review of what was done in the past couple of months for you to review. We feel it doesn't need to be a full-blown, shall we say, staff meeting, but it could be part of the steering committee meeting, such as the mayor and Mr. Brown, just to show up and to talk to us. That's all we're asking to do. And so, and also to keep in fact that we need to get on the the Planning Commission in June in order to make our third quarter construction schedule. Time is money. We're spending over $100 million on this hotel project, and we need to expedite as quickly as possible. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate you listening to my conversation.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Mick Sobzak.
Welcome.
Hey, doing a long time no see. So about six weeks ago, you heard me talk about a hate crime that was committed in Temecula. I know the young girl who did that hasn't been charged with anything, and I don't hold my breath that she will. You had a black man have motor oil thrown all over him for exercising his freedom of speech, specifically his freedom of religion and his views. He's also a United States Army veteran, and it just seems like the city turned a blind eye to this. I asked if the family was billed for the cleanup of that and haven't received an answer, so I'm going to ask one of you who actually is concerned with this to ask either the city attorney or the city manager, I don't know who is responsible for answering that, was that family, because I do know the name of the child, was that family billed? Or are the taxpayers of Temecula going to be on the hook for all of those cleanup costs? One of my answers was answered by a gentleman from Public Works, and I appreciate that, that when I spoke about that corner being the site of a hate crime and that concrete being stained, whether it was going to be completely cleaned or replaced. He told me that a work order went in that day, so I appreciate that action was taken and the voice of your citizens was heard, but it didn't come from here. It actually came from there and here. So my only question is, is I'm going to sit here, wait for an answer that one of you during your free time, when you're allowed to speak, can the citizens of Temecula get an answer? Are we on the hook for all of that cleanup, or will the family be billed for that? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are we through with public comments? Okay. Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move on to city council reports. Do any of my fellow colleagues have anything to report this evening? Councilmember Alexander.
All right. I just have two things to report from the last two weeks. So I had the privilege and the honor to be representative for our city with Walk Like Mad, so Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and I was there with Chuck Washington, and it was a privilege to be able to listen to the families who've experienced loss of their loved ones and their children, and just to see what this organization is doing for our city, especially going to the high schools and educating them as far as drunk driving or being intoxicated and what the ramifications could look like. So I just want to applaud them and thank them for coming to our city. That was at Lynn Field. The next slide. If I can also thank Chief Crater and the other firefighters who gave me such a wonderful opportunity and tour. I was able to go to the EEC, which for some of you that might not know what that is, that's going to be the Emergency Command Center. I was able to go to the IT Command and Hemet Ryan Air Attack Base. I had the privilege of listening in on, on the 911 calls in the area for Riverside and also being able to go in and see how some of these planes operate to be able to keep our city, our county, safe and to see exactly what our, our contract includes. So it was just really nice, and we actually had plans to do more, but there's only so many hours. So again, I just want to thank Chief Crater for all of your time and your effort. It was a great trip, and I learned a lot, and I look forward to doing even more. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Calphus, anything this evening?
Yes, slide up, please. Here it is. So this past week, our fire department here in Temecula moved from a ISO Class 3 to a Level 2, and essentially, the insurance companies use this ISO rating to set premiums for businesses and residential properties. Every five years, our city is reevaluated. In 2018, we moved from a three to, or sorry, a four to a three, and this year, we have moved from a three to a two. So just exciting news, and lower ISO readings typically result in lower insurance premiums for our businesses. So again, this is just a testament to the hard work and dedication of Fire Chief Crater and the firefighters here in Temecula, and if you want a lower insurance premium, make sure to check with your insurance broker.
Wonderful. So much Chief Crater and Calfire love tonight. I like it. All right. Mayor Protem Stewart?
So tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock is Daryl Farmbach's memorial service at Vail Ranch Headquarters. So anybody who knew Daryl and wants to go to the memorial service, it's tomorrow at 11:00 A.M.
All right, thanks, sir. I have one slide I'd just like to put up. So this last week, CPRS, or California Parks and Rec Society, had their conference and expo down in San Diego, and I just wanted to recognize and acknowledge the hard work of our community services staff. They won three awards this year, one in Innovative Programming Awards for their aquatics hiring workshop, and then two in marketing, the Award of Excellence for Marketing and Communication for our Park Adventure Series, and if you haven't seen that on Instagram, Facebook, our social media, it's quite wonderful, and then an Award of Excellence for our print publication for the 2223 season brochure for the Temecula Theater. The hard work of these arts and culture professionals make a huge impact on our community, and I didn't want to not recognize them for that, so thank you for all you do for our community. All right. Good stuff. Okay, we'll go and move on to our consent calendar. Item number one is waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item two is approve action minutes of March 28, 2023. Item number three is approve list of demands. Item number four is approve amended and restated office lease and memorandum of lease between the city of Temecula and the Temecula Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau, DBA Visit Temecula Valley. Item number five is adopt resolution regarding the addressing of accessory and junior accessory dwelling units, long-range planning, project number LR23-0110. Item number six is approve second amendment to the agreement for consultant services with Hickson Hartwick, Inc., for engineering plan check services. Item number seven is approve freeway maintenance agreement with State of California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, and item number eight, approve agreement for consultant services with Falcon Engineering Services, Inc., for the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase 2, PW16-01. And item nine is adopt resolution finding that an emergency condition continues to exist within the meaning of the Public Contract Code Sections 20168 and 22050, and appropriate addition, appropriate additional funding for emergency repairs. With that, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Alexander. Let us vote. Okay, and that passes 5-0. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the Temecula Council meeting to the TCSD meeting.
And I will call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right. So we'll go on to consent calendar, which is item number 10, approve action minutes of March 28, 2023.
Move approval.
It's been moved to second. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Director's report. Director report.
Hi there. We do, we have a couple of slides for you this evening. First of all, we'd like to remind everybody, we'll be celebrating Earth and Arbor Day together on Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00 A.M. at Sam Hicks Monument Park. The morning will be filled with family-friendly activities, educational booths, ceremonial tree planting, and light refreshments. You can visit local groups and organizations that will encourage the community to embrace this year's Earth Day theme, which is invest in our planet. Also, you'll see on the side there a picture of our summer/fall 2023 Guide to Leisure Activities, also known as our Recreation Brochure. I mentioned this last time, but I just want to remind everybody, you should have gotten this in your mailbox if you live within the city limits, and if you don't, it's available right here in the lobby of this building or any of our other community services facilities. Definitely take a look. It's 48 pages, full of activities, events, and just overall fun for all ages in our community. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. General Manner?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right. So I'm going to give a little report on CPRS also, because I went to that, and it was really quite incredible, because it sounds like community parks and recs, you know, it's, it's kind of cliche, but I sat in on a keynote speech about conflict management, and, and really, it's, it's incredible to think our Parks and Rec people are trained in how to handle conflict and manage it. And so it was, it was, it was kind of like an aha moment for me, because it really made me realize that community services provide something that politics doesn't, and that's togetherness. I mean, when you take your kid to the ball-dime and you're not caring or even knowing what political party the other kid's dad is or mom is, same with going to the concert in the park, same thing. You're sitting there, listening to a great concert that's being put on by the city. Again, you don't care if this person is from the left or from the right or in the middle. It's, it's just you're enjoying a great concert in the city of Temecula. And so that's what I see community services does for our city. It creates community. I mean, literally, it is our community services. And so that was really kind of a, a real appreciation moment for me to see how this Parks and Recs, which sounds like a, it's, we call it the Fun Commission, but in reality, it really, they do a lot more than just produce fun. They produce unity amongst us all, so that was really a cool, cool moment, so. All right, any other director's reports?
No, sir.
All right. So I will adjourn this meeting till the next one.
Great. And so I just have a quick question. We're going to be pulling item 11 from the TPFA. Do I have to, do I have to?
Yes, please call it to order because we did not post a cancellation notice for it.
Understood. So I'm going to call the joint meeting of Temecula Public Financing Authority and the City Council to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here, and we are going to pull item 11. It will be not discussed this evening, and we'll continue it to another meeting. Executive Director's report.
Nothing tonight.
Board of Directors, anything? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
If, if I can just add, if, City Manager, if you can do me a favor, please, sir, if you can just address our citizen, Mr. Mick, his concern that he had earlier, I'd appreciate it just to be able to get back with him about what he was talking about. Thank you, sir.
So I don't know that that's relevant under TPFA, but. Yeah, no, we're not quite there yet. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn TPFA and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Do you have items for future city council agendas? Okay. All right, not quite an item. Okay, City Managers' report, anything this evening, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. We adjourned.